Yeah.
Okay, Council, let me call us back to order. Let's go to item B, review city code section ten dash nine two pertaining to mixed use. Now, are you ready to go and then, yes, sir?
Yes, sir.
Last time we were reviewing the mixed use application and of course we've instructed staff to look a little bit more closely at the mixed use zone.
Yeah.
From what I heard last time, there were four things. One, the definition of what it means to be adjacent to. Two, drive-through windows. Three, the architectural variation standards of fifteen feet. And then just general distribution of density as far as the having commercial in every building. So, I looked through the ordinance and in red, I've got on the screen also if you want to look at it, to talk to the adjacent. This is, this is just an idea. Obviously, you know, you guys are going to discuss what you think is important to change here, but I just took the word adjacent out and said within eighty feet of the property line. But that, you know, that's up to discussion of what you guys feel if that meets that. That's a good question.
What is the size of an average roadway, like?
Eighty-four feet.
Our, our standard road section is sixty feet for a local road. And that's back a sidewalk to back a sidewalk, if you want Robert to answer.
He's not, so he can't.
I guess my thinking out.
I'm taking eighty-four, what's our eighty-four feet?
The new five hundred west is going to be eighty-four feet. But that, we don't even have, I mean, yeah, that's, even two thousand, it's going to be sixty-six.
Is our local road.
Local collector's sixty-six.
In my mind, if it's across the street, it's no longer adjacent.
Okay.
And so, I would say that, given that standard, I, it seems like sixty-six or something like that that meets the standard of being across the street, that, that seems like something that I could defend where eighty seems a little, remember that, remember that, just the roadway is sixty-six, you typically have setbacks before there's buildings.
True.
Okay, that's a good point.
Usually about fifteen, yeah, twenty feet.
I think we require at least, is it fifteen or twenty feet?
Depends on the zone, like the RPC's eight, but you know, the R, what is it, R three, I think it's twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five feet setbacks?
From the back of the sidewalk to the front house.
So we're talking about.
But yeah, there, it could be, you know, you guys could change it to whatever you want.
So how do you get that standard?
And this is.
You'd be over a hundred feet before you would be considered, anything within a hundred feet would be considered adjacent.
If you're going by the sixty-six foot, if you're going by a standard residential street, that's smaller.
Yeah.
Well, I was, yeah, I want it to be based on something, but go ahead.
Well, I'm just saying that this is, we're talking about next to single-family detached, so in, in this particular wording of adjacent, so I just wanted to clarify to make sure we're talking about that situation.
The eighty feet could be backyard to backyard is really kind of, so a lot of, depending on the law, I mean, this is all averages here, but the rear setback in like a R one, I'll have to look at it, but it's, it's around thirty feet, you know, so that'd get you to sixty and some, but it's, you're right, it's, it's a little arbitrary, it's kind of like, yeah, that's a pretty big number, that makes it after that seems like, and I was looking out my window and like, okay, there's eighty feet, that's, I don't know, it's up to you guys.
Well, I would err on the side of best case scenario, what could I expect in front of my house if I wanted to be on a normal street? So if that's the case, it sounds like the sixty-six foot road plus a twenty-five foot setback, that makes it ninety-eight?
Would it be, wait, on the regular road though, sixty-six, is that normal?
That's a collector road.
Collector.
The right-of-way.
Which most of the city lives in.
Most of the city's on a local road.
No, that's the thing, local, yeah.
Okay, so sixty feet plus the twenty-five, we have eighty-five feet. So within eighty-five feet would be the normal expectation to be considered adjacent to if you lived in the neighborhood.
Well, no, I think that, that's when you're no longer adjacent to.
You're no longer.
Because.
Right.
So it's if within that distance you're adjacent, but beyond that, you're not.
That's kind of where I was going, if you're standing in your front lawn.
Seth, did you have something?
No, no, I'm good, I'm trying to, trying to follow here.
Okay.
Should we all look at the camera?
So again, my, my issue is just that it be based on something logical, so.
And that's, that's an interesting argument about across the street.
So if you, if you went to what it would be across the street, then you are no longer adjacent and you don't have any requirements.
You don't even have to put a foot requirement on there either, you could say closest structure to the boundary, that's the adjacent structure, because in, I don't want to speak too much to the specific application because that's not what we're talking about.
Yeah, we're not.
We're talking about general.
But in certain circumstances, hypothetically, there could be a garage and then the residential structure, so is the garage then?
Is that the adjacent?
The adjacent structure.
And it is.
Or are they both adjacent structures?
Well.
And that's saying is that we're trying to also address the, the, was the spirit in which we were trying to be sensitive to seeing the homes. So I think that if we are going towards the across the street idea, then I don't mind that.
No, I don't mind eighty-five feet, I would say that makes sense.
And even some zones are twenty feet, so you could do sixty plus twenty, eighty.
I would err on the high side, not the low side. But to be fair, I'm questioning whether we really have a, I mean, when we're talking about three-story, that seems to be a big shocker because most residences are not three-story. I'd say there aren't some, but the, the most residents are not three-story, so there are a lot of objections to be next to something that is not allowed in your zone.
And that's why we're trying to.
Right, so the question is, have we even, no, I mean, have we even come to the conclusion that three stories is a necessary part of mixed use to begin with? I mean, there are lots of ways to do other things.
I would say that going along with this, the reason why we settled there is because commercial buildings can be very tall and can be ten feet away. So the logic in that is, okay, this is residential, same height, similar height, that's.
And the other thing we considered was that if we were requiring them to have a commercial as their first level, then they have, then they would need to have something they could build up to.
It's a livable space.
And I'm going along those lines, when we talk about the ability to build beyond the commercial level, if the bottom floor is occupied commercial, I don't mind two, a second store, or two stories on top of that, but if you go straight to three for just plain residential, I'm wondering whether we allow that, because we have not allowed that in the past in the city. And the only reason that that's a real issue would be that we're just, it is really different to me, I, if you go to these establishments, which I did this week, because I was with my daughter looking at college apartments, there is a big difference between people trucking up one flight of stairs or up two, not for the person, but for the amount of noise that's generated in a stairwell, the higher up you go, the longer you're in that stairwell, the more that is a noise factor for the other residents. Not sure that's the only issue we consider, but I'm trying to put it in context and say, why would this be, why would a three-story be different than a two-story? It seems the two stories are more desirable, actually charged more because they're not the same mass housing as.
And I would disagree on that, I think the reason why we talked about going to the three, three-story was because commercial buildings are that tall anyway, and, and then to make it better livable space and, and to make, it just makes more sense to me.
As far as the distance goes, adjacent, we, we do have a bit of a double standard here, in the, in our commercial zone where it is ten feet away. I, I know that my neighbors that are adjacent to a rather large commercial building and they stare at a giant blank wall and have not seen the sun rise for twenty years, this is actually way better, I, I'm sure they would prefer that any day of the week, and so I just want to make sure that everyone understands that if this stayed residential, the alternative of, instead of having, you know, a apartment building or something like it eighty feet away, they could have with just a blank wall, ten feet away.
If it stays commercial, not residential.
Well, if we just, if we said, you know what, forget the mixed use, we're going straight commercial, build, build your big box, that, there's the potential of a giant cinder block wall behind it and they will never see the sun again, and I, I just want to, I, I don't know if that's a desirable situation to individuals.
What are the fun center?
We've had continual complaints about people next to the fun center, people next to Utah onions, all came forward and said, we, we hate this, this is not fair to us. In both cases, those structures were there before the house.
That's true.
So, I mean, I have a little sympathy for that because they built knowing it was there.
But they also.
I don't think that was true in the case of the rush.
But these neighborhoods also came in, actually things were so commercial as well and all now.
But the point being is it doesn't seem to be desirable, that people don't want to be next to that, so should we be planning for it or planning to not have it? That's the question.
Are you talking three-story versus two-story?
Yep.
So you're saying, do we just take mixed use and say, we're going to make this a two-story zone instead of a three-story zone, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm asking the question, if, if, do we consider, there's a couple of different levels of the question, number one, if you are, if you're up against single-family residence, do we allow the full three-story? Maybe we don't, because people seem to have a real issue with that, at least we've experienced at the city.
But at this point, we're trying to figure out what up against means.
Okay, well, I thought we kind of decided that we were right in the eighty-foot range, eighty to eighty-five foot range.
Well, but then, then here's your question on that, if you're going to consider that's what it would be like for a residential area, then wouldn't you have eighty feet between homes?
No, they're not between, no.
So we're talking about a backyard and a backyard, and so if we're going to be suggesting, this is just my thought, if we're talking about, this is called adjacent, then we have to be, you'd have to consider what it's like if you're in a backyard, this isn't going to have, this doesn't need its own reset of new rules that adds an extra twenty feet to it, or thirty feet, or a hundred feet, because if you had a backyard in a backyard, what would that square footage be generally?
So what, what I'm considering, and I, I understand where you're going, but I'm saying, if we were going to do up against, the question is, are we letting the three-story, if it's up against like project, I understand that the distance of backyard to backyard works, because it's the same height building. If it's a different height building, I'm saying that you need the adjacent to to maybe factor in what it would be like to be across the street, because that's where the full height makes sense.
So if they're saying that they would do, if, if they say, we'll go with the garage, then that's one story, so does that mean after that, they can go up to the three-story with, because they're no longer adjacent to a single-family home, they're next to a parking structure that's a foot, or you know, a story?
And I think the follow-on question begs, if they do drop it to two-story, two-story is actually allowable in any zone, and so by that definition, they could, like, I think is where you were going, is they could technically, that, that buffer no longer applies per se, and they could actually move up to the, the boundary.
Yes.
Technically, a single-family home could build to the building code and.
Yes.
So what I'm suggesting is maybe, the, the third story requirement cannot be within that eighty-five foot. You could put a two-story there, because you could put a two-story.
Yeah, two-story could go right up next to it.
Full-on buffer the eighty-five feet and go straight to three-story, because that's no longer considered adjacent.
Right, so your three stories have to be that far away, whatever you put in between there is debatable.
And I know that there's several examples throughout the city of, of two-story homes that are completely tall.
They're built up basements.
And depending on how they're built, could easily be a one at the end of our street three-story, if you, how you structure it.
Mine is not a full daylight basement, but I can see in every yard for a, a block radius.
We know who's pee-pee.
So can you do that?
Yeah, so can my neighbor, so that, that window goes both ways.
And that's, so that's the point that I'm trying to figure out, is if we're allowing something that's like what is already in your neighborhood, that's one thing, if we're allowing something that is not allowable in your neighborhood.
But these, these are two different zones next to each other already.
Right.
They're already two different.
And that's why the buffer, meaning what's up against it, can't be something that wouldn't be allowed to be next if we're in the same zone, but beyond the buffer, you could be. I, that's just kind of where I'm going.
So, so we've landed at eighty-five, we're good?
Eighty-five means it's no longer adjacent.
It's no longer adjacent.
Because it would be across the road.
But that being said.
I'm good with that since I posed the question.
But are we going to make that stipulation only for if they go to three? If it's a two-story, are they then allowed to move closer to the boundary?
Yes, yes. So up to three-story is an eighty-five, because it's no longer adjacent.
The key would be though that.
Yeah, I think he might be.
Seth, you trying to get in?
No, it's okay, go ahead.
It's always hard to be on the phone.
It's tough to be on the phone, we've been there.
Yeah, it's like impossible.
So, I guess the, the point would be that, I just want to make sure that we don't word this in a way where if, if you put a two-story within that eighty-five feet, you suddenly don't have to honor the eighty-five feet before you get to your third story.
Oh, yeah.
See what I'm saying? You can't like say, well, I put a one-story garage, so at the thirty feet, I'm going to start putting my three-story because of the garage, that's not, that doesn't work.
Yeah, I think we're, we're all followed on, you wait till eighty-five.
And so the wording has to reflect that, does that make sense?
That whether or not there's something in the interim, you still have eighty-five feet before you get to the third story.
And I would also like to put in our logic behind the eighty-five feet, at least saying it's across the street.
Yeah.
Primarily because.
It's a connector road as well as a lock that down.
A lock set.
Primarily because we've actually heard today that, you know, that sometimes we have numbers that we don't know where we got to, and so I would like some.
Should be in the record.
Yes.
Council, I'm sensing consensus at eighty-five feet. Yeah.
For if, if they're going three stories.
Next to single-family.
Now we need to discuss if they're going two-story.
And single-family detached, there's a single-family detached.
So I think two-story is now considered.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because it's.
Because that goes along with our original decision anyway, so that's, that's full-on adjacent to, and so what did we decide adjacent to is then?
We just discussed.
I think it's a backyard.
Just, just that part of the backyard.
I think I got zero to eighty-five, two-story max, eighty-five plus three-story.
Yeah. So the.
This is specific to a single-family detached.
It can't be zero, so it has to be the, the size of a standard.
Well, the setback is eight feet, so the rear yard setback is twenty feet.
Okay, so forty feet.
But we already had that already.
So, but it, I guess the bottom line, if you go garage, it has to be, you could probably do a garage with an eight.
Yeah. If you consider the garage an accessory structure.
Commercial could already be ten, so we can't do the same as what we do in a residential.
So, ten, are we good with the ten that we had before?
Yeah, the garages are kind of like an accessory structure, so.
Okay, but you still have to have the, the setback.
Yeah, the.
The garage setback is three feet, in, in a residential area.
Residential, yes, but ten feet according to what are already is in this.
Okay, the buffer ordinance requires ten feet of landscaping between single-family and mixed use.
Okay, so that makes sense.
We want to make sure we preserve that.
Yes.
We need a good land, you know, we, we do, we want to be sensitive to those neighbors.
Yes.
But, so can we move on to the next, another question? Because I think, for me, the biggest question of all is how do we get the needed commercial business element, because the whole purpose of this was that we would increase that element in the city, this was not written as an apartment zone.
So you're talking about more going to linear versus vertical, because we, you know, you were talking about the restrictions that happen with getting commercial in if it's not allowed.
So I did see that you made the adjustment further down where it no longer has to sit on the sidewalk, and so that does make allowances for a drive-through to come in, turn, and then go around the building and exit, and so I liked that, that we removed that.
Well, it allows them to group the commercial together, which might make us get more, because when we had a requirement to have every building along the front edge, they're, they're forcing them to spread it out in places maybe it didn't sense.
And it also makes it feel less inviting to other people to come into, into an area that is scattered, in, just in my own opinion, I think it's easier for me to feel like, well, this is a commercial area, this is, I'm allowed to be here, rather than feel like, is this somebody's home? Is this, you know, am I parking in somebody's spot?
And I go back to the idea that, we, we said we wanted to allow for form-based design, but I almost feel like we have to require a, a minimum percentage of commercial element, we're not going to get any.
You do have to do a percentage, I think.
Or, or we're going to get none, that's the problem.
Well, the thing is, is that you have to also think about too, along with this, is what commercial can you get, because, or what, what do you think you're going to be able to attract with this, I mean, is there, even though you have a certain amount of space, are they going to be able to fill it? That's the, that's always the issue. That's going to be the end.
Yeah.
That's what brought us to this one.
Let's not call it mixed use if this is an apartment zone, that's, that's a really big deal to me here, if we're going to just say we're okay with apartments, then we have to call it an apartment zone.
Can I read what we have, and maybe, I didn't really touch that, because I didn't know if there was consensus or not, but this says, mixed use required, one hundred percent residential projects are prohibited, apartment complex sells offices may not be the project's sole commercial space, and the development agreement shall require the commercial component of the project can't be omitted and shouldn't run with the land, so whether or not you guys put a ratio on it, or some other tool, that's fine, just consider that every site is unique in its market viability for commercial, but that's why it's just hard to predict of what.
Okay, now, see, here's the thing that I go back to, if people are going to argue that commercial is not viable, then we shouldn't be trying to fit a square peg in a round hole, we shouldn't be trying to use the mixed use zone. If we need to talk about what would be viable for some kind of higher density housing type product, it needs to be its own thing, otherwise, people are going to come in and say, well, you call this mixed use, so that means anywhere I want to put that, mixed use applies. So, again, that's, the key is, let's not destroy mixed use by putting what's not mixed use and calling it that.
I'm, I'm also concerned that we are talking about West Davis Corridor area, the off-and-on-ramp area being our main center of town, kind of a feeling, and we're going to end up pulling twenty to thirty percent of our traffic that way, and then we're saying we're requiring commercial to be east of this, whereas we're diminishing the supply of, of customers, potential customers, and, and it concerns me that we're setting some businesses up to fail if that's going to be kind of an empty one thousand to two thousand, I don't know how.
And that's part of the reason.
So it's supposed to get like a, a ten to twenty percent reduction, but, but the traffic's not going away.
But that's, but that's also why we're considering the mixed use in first place, to foster more people to help those businesses.
Yeah, and, and that would, yeah, I just, I don't want us to say, this is how much commercial we're going to put in here and sink or swim.
Yeah.
Well, see, I'm trying to say more in the lines of, let's find an alternative, so that there is, I don't want to force what won't work, but I also don't want to destroy the tool that we have in place, so if we're just going to accept apartments, let's quickly hammer out something that allows that and call it that, but let us not go back and say, we'll never have any mixed use, because nobody will ever do that. Council, you'll notice that I'm allowing open discussion, Brody, I know you have.
Yeah, I just wanted to throw a possibility out, and I almost hesitate to suggest it because it can, it can get dicey, and there's pluses and minuses to it, but instead of codifying a minimum number, perhaps in the ordinance, what if we codified a target minimum? So it's not required, but it's known, it's kind of a soft requirement, so we say, you know, the, the city, yeah, yeah, we said an expectation, the city's target for mixed use is a minimum of ten, twenty percent of, of the land. Most of these developments are going to be proposed in a CDA or CRA, and we will have the negotiating ability to give incentives for that commercial, based on the, the new property tax increment that the, that the apartments will actually bring to the town homes or whatever they're building, and so that creates an opportunity to negotiate, and we have some, you know, some incentives to negotiate with to bring the commercial that we're desiring, and we still want to make it viable long-term, but sometimes the, the incentive can help get the upfront cost built for that commercial, and then it can be viable after that, so maybe we don't have a hard number, because every.
When you say the upfront built, you mean the starting costs of the government, of government, the, the business.
The commercial.
The commercial to move in there.
Yeah, so it reduces.
We're not, we're not, we're not, we're not offering CDA money to, to actually build a building.
Yeah, well, well, not the, not the residential buildings, but you can have the increased property tax from the CDA go to the commercial building to help, to help the financing of the commercial.
I understand you can do that, but I wouldn't want to do it without a tenant.
Right.
I would have a real hard time if you're saying to build spec on the taxpayer's dollar, because that would be a lose.
And that's part of the negotiation.
Well, how, that is a specific proposal, that they're suggesting having it be owner occupied, or, you know, owners come in and buy that, that commercial space rather than rent it, how does that affect?
If, if there's the effort of market for that.
So can the CDA do anything in that case, or are we talking about, okay, so that could help them, okay?
Because you're a business and you're saying, yes, I want to settle.
The address money and.
It's the same as if, okay, not just.
So, you know, we're, we're, we're trying not to dictate the market, because we shouldn't, because we're not the market and we don't know, we can't control it anyway, but if we codify a target, then that can be a starting point for negotiations and, and further rezoning.
But I am going to go back to this, and that was when we developed this zone, I was adamant, and there were others that, that agreed at the time, though opinions can change, I'm not holding any of it to that, but was adamant that I was not going to just approve straight apartments, and I feel like that's kind of what's been applied for, is straight up just, there, there isn't a real strong commercial element, and that was the purpose of this, was to add to the city, I know there's also been discussion about, should we accept existing commercial as the element, but the, the point was to add new commercial, not to.
Although, I have to say, for that company, you know, they need to expand, and making them stay where they're at could create, I mean, that's not necessarily a good deal either, to pick a network in general.
No, I wasn't speaking to them at all, no. No, I was, I was.
Because you were talking about existing, so I was like.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not, no, I don't care if you, I'm talking about if you were to say, we are going to utilize Shadow Point Shopping Center as our commercial element, which already exists.
Oh, I see where you're going.
And just build the apartments based on a whole zone, that doesn't work, that's already there.
Yeah.
I like the name Lou.
Yeah, I, I couldn't accept that.
Right.
To piggyback what Brody was saying, if, I'd recommend, rather than do a ratio, a middle ratio, maybe do based off of square footage with, with understanding of different types of uses and what their square, where square footages are, like Smith's is about fifty, like a grocer is about fifty to sixty thousand square feet, Walmart's like two hundred, you know, like a fast food's like five thousand, you know, so, is what, is what I fear is if we put a ratio in there based off of, I don't know, the square footage of the structures or the land or whatever, that we're going to require basically like a Walmart sized commercial component on the site, you know, then that, then that sits empty.
Right.
Yeah, one, and, and this gets to your, your argument, is it just an apartment building or is it a mixed use?
Yeah.
I, you know, and then maybe there's, there's some room for that discussion, because when, let's say you put an apartment complex or town home complex next to commercial, theoretically, and I think it's reasonable to assume that the sales of the existing commercial will go up.
Agreed.
You know, if you build next to a grocery store, most of those people will shop at that grocery store, and the sales tax revenue in the city goes up.
and the sales tax revenue in the city goes up. And so it does benefit existing, even though, but you're right, it's no longer a mixed use project.
It's not mixed anymore, and that's, that's just my point.
You're saying call, call what it is.
Yeah, if that's what we wanna make it, let's just make it that.
Right.
Well, and, and I just asked earlier, I asked for some numbers, and I know it's not ready yet, but just what are the revenues that come from apartment buildings themselves? I wanna know, like, on a specifics of, of taxable square footage and/or what are, what is that benefit to the city itself? You know, because we talked about it at the retreat, what are, how exactly does that offset? What is the benefit to the city? And we need to get those numbers.
And I could provide that. I mean, you have property tax, and we know the property tax rate, right? So we can calculate that.
Okay.
Sales tax is a little more complicated, 'cause half of sales tax comes from the population. So the rooftops do benefit the sales tax, but then there's a point of sale. So you have to make an assumption based off of how much you think people are gonna spend locally. I don't know, fifty dollars per household per week, you know, and then you can derive that based off the sales tax that way. But then you, and then we have all of our fee schedules for impact fees, so you could calculate how many dollars of parking impact fees and public safety and roads. You know, that, we, I could, I could provide that if you're wondering what the financial implications are.
Yes, I, I would like that. I think that would be really helpful to know what we're working with, with our infrastructure costs as well.
Counselor, I'm gonna continue this discussion for another ten minutes, but in the economy of time, I'd like to move on at eight, at, at ten after eight.
So I guess the, the real thing is, if, if you wanna go there, let's talk about what would be acceptable in an apartment zone. I think we, it wouldn't be as hard to craft that as it would to try and see how we protect an element that doesn't exist in the plans that we're seeing for this zone.
So what are you saying, what element doesn't exist?
Commercial.
Well, I'm, but it's being provided according to what was written, so you're saying that they have to have one on the hook before they can build?
No, I'm saying that there has to be a greater element of it. I mean, one of them said, well, if this is vacant, we'll just, you know, throw our gym in there. Well, that doesn't, that doesn't provide anything near to the city. There's no, that's not a commercial element.
But.
Josh Hughes said something interesting earlier about there's, that we need to designate. Aren't there several, let me see what I looked down. Somewhere. Oh, there are three different designations for our mixed use. So do we want to try and break it down into that? Is it suggesting that?
Well, in a way, to me, that's, I listened very carefully. That was, it's a very strong way to look at this, but in a way, I feel like we're still trying to fit the square peg in a round hole because we're still trying to say, okay, this is a residential mixed use, which.
Rather than a commercial mixed use or.
This is mixed, this is a residential use.
We do have to go back to the thought of, why do we consider these areas in the first place? And it's because we can't get any commercial to go there anyway.
Which is why I say if we can't do that, then we should get some kind of other variation on residential that does allow for what people would put there and just let it.
So you're thinking an apartment zone there?
An art floor type zone.
I disagree.
Why?
I, I think, I, I went, went the mixed use route because I do think this is viable, and I think adding the additional residents into the zone will not only help the existing commercial, but I think there is room for some additional commercial in each of these zones. While I don't think it needs to be fifty percent, I think when we first were doing this, we were imagining, you know, a, a park city type resort with little wood signs and all, and, okay, that's probably a little unrealistic and, and, but at the same time, I do think that, I, I think that we, since we've made this adjustment, I've had, actually had some decent ideas come out of, you know, maybe we allow for a, I, I, Maverick was brought up, or, you know, some type, I, I've heard the, the, the commercial condos where it's, it's, it's more of a home business type environment where someone can rent it.
Where they, well, I thought was, they would buy it themselves. I think that was a great idea.
And I don't know if that, I, I've never looked at those. I don't know if that's a recipe for success, but.
It's called living at home. It's.
It's called living at home.
It's just working out of your house. That's not a new business.
Well, it's a different.
But same.
You can't make somebody open that business. That's the thing.
Sure.
Anybody can buy that and live in it, and there's no requirement that they open a business.
But as long as we go to like the horizontal mixed use where we allow for, and I think we already do this, I, I'm okay with a pad going in that provides some service. I, I wanna put something in each of these zones. I, I do not want a straight apartment zone. I, I think at some point, we need to say, look, we, this is a commercial corridor. There is viability for something along this corridor. Is, is there tons and tons of acres of it? No, there's not. We're, we've seen reports where, for our current population, we're actually slightly overbuilt on commercial, which is. But as you add in a thousand more people in a two-mile stretch, I, I like to think that.
They can sustain.
They can sustain something else that's thirty feet from their front door.
So I, I hear what you're saying, and I'm not gonna say that that's, that's not right. I think, I, I think you're just very valid points.
Thank you.
But, but my concern is, what happens when we go a few months of people just hammering away and chipping away and saying, hey, look, this one little closet equals eighty apartments, and I wanna do that times forty? How long do we endure that before we say, this just isn't getting us what we want? And so what I'm trying to say is, I would rather have an alternative. That, I'm not saying that we don't require this in mixed use. I'm just saying, I don't want to try and settle on calling that mixed use. It's not. There is no commercial in that.
Well, except that we are requiring some of those buildings to be commercial, and the thing is, is that they're gonna be a loss if they don't have commercial.
And see, I'm okay if, if the commercial on these sites is a professional office building that's just dedicated to law offices.
It's a legitimate office building.
Absolutely.
But if it's, okay, these are five townhomes, and the one on the end is gonna be owned by a lawyer who works out of his house, that's not mixed use.
I agree, but I, I gotta think that there is some viability to professional office simply because I know of another building, another person that's really excited to build a very largeish building not too far from this area.
I agree, and I, I would look at that favorably, but I'm not looking, I'm not seeing that.
Okay, and, and so then let's, let's make this where, where we would like to, if you're gonna say, as a mixed use, let's push towards a professional office type thing, or if they wanna put in a large maverick, although I gotta say, I, I, I'm confused because people seem to be more in favor of that, but as far as traffic goes.
That's a nightmare.
That is a nightmare for the residents.
I guess my point is really that I want to see something that is legitimate commercial use on these properties if we're gonna call it mixed.
I, I absolutely agree, and so if that's the case, then let's try and, if, if there's something unclear in the zone, let's push that says, you know, some corner, I think the hard thing for them before was it had to be all along.
Every, every building.
Yeah, and, and I think as we fix that and say, look, we're okay if you group all of your commercial in this area.
Yeah.
I, I think that allows more options, and so I'd like to see what they can come up with, with that change. I think that gives them more flexibility. We've pulled, said, you don't have to be right on the road. There's allowable spaces for a drive-through type thing. I'm, I'm not saying I want tons of fast food, but I think there's other services that could be provided. I would love to see a dry cleaner in Syracuse again. We have the one in Smiths. But, I mean, there's just lots of things that I, services that are out there.
So how to attack the challenge that what we've seen so far doesn't equal, equal even a whole percent of the square footage? I mean, we're like ninety-nine point something percent.
It's easy, I just don't approve it.
Let's just ask.
If people keep saying, according to your words, this is approvable, then we're not getting anywhere.
Rather than, rather than throwing out subjective percentages, what are the real percentages? We need to know that. What are the real percentages of what's being proposed?
Are we talking land use?
According to what they've shown so far.
Yeah, what are the real percentages, rather than saying it's not.
I, I definitely answer that.
And, and the thing is, is that, but.
If you base it on square footage versus a living space, it doesn't even equal five percent.
I know, that's true.
I could tell you roughly, I don't, I don't have a calculator in front of me, but the two applications we have.
Yeah.
The Briggs is fifty, um, how many units is that?
About fifty percent.
Oh, sorry, hundred sixteen units, and they're, and they're, this is rough. Hundred sixteen, and they, they've got, I wanna say about five thousand square feet. Um, and then the other proposal.
It's not even ten percent.
Yeah, so it depends on if you go in the land area, it's a five-acre site, or if you own a number of units or whatever. The other site's about fifteen acres and it's three hundred and sixty units, and they're closer to like ten thousand square feet, so they're.
So you're, so.
No, you would.
So they're not.
So your alternative to this is saying that they all be apartment and don't even call it, any, don't encourage any sort of commercial then?
I, I mean, to be fair, when we go like all apartment something, I'm going to be more restrictive of what I allow for a straight-up apartment because I feel like we made concessions to get the commercial. We're not getting the concessions. Nobody's meeting the concession side.
What concessions did we make? I, I want you to.
We said that we wanted commercial in, within the project, straight-up businesses that would be there as part of this.
And that was because we wanted to encourage more commercial to come in, right? But again, if, unless you've got something on the hook, are you gonna be satisfied?
No.
What restrictions are you talking about? What restrictions are you discussing? Because you said you'd be more restrictive.
I, I know one of the things.
Well, I would start by just putting unlimited tall apartment complexes everywhere.
Yeah, when, when we were originally thinking about this, the, the idea was in order to make commercial viable in a mixed-use area, you had to go to three stories.
Right.
I, I think if you went to a, a straight apartment zone, three stories go away first.
Because you already got rid of your main level requirements.
You got rid of the commercial levels, and you only need to.
Counselor, can I see where we're unified? Jordan, you made a suggestion about maybe grouping the commercial into a one spot and not taking it along this.
So he's already made that change in here, and he's also moved it off the road. And I said fifteen feet, I, I still think about the variation of buildings, I'm sorry, we didn't discuss this, but I, I noticed it says thirty, but even though, I, I still think when I look at these buildings, they just look.
Messy.
Like there's just tons everywhere, and so I, I think whatever it is in there, it's.
But you don't want it to be all flat.
I don't want it to be flat. I want variation, but I, I think it's, it's.
We've gotten pretty specific about the variation, so you wanna remove the specifics and go more form? Or what are you wanting to be, say?
It might look that way, it might be because of the ordinance, but also might be because of that's what they designed. So there's a certain aspect in this review process. If you don't like the way it looks, you can give them feedback.
I know, but every time we do that, she picks country and I don't.
You should know your place.
In the discussion today, we've, we've, we've come up with a reason, we've defined what adjacent is. I like that. I think that, I think we both are, I think we all feel pretty good and comfortable about that. Seth, are you okay?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Before we are with it.
Well, I'm concerned that we, we're gonna leave them stuck if we keep this not deciding. Is there anything, any direction we can give?
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Okay, sorry.
I'm trying to get at, because we all seem to be pretty comfortable with the rationale between adjacent and your home is across a street, which is, we're sending this. So we all seem to be unified there. You made a suggestion about maybe grouping the commercial in, in an area.
And I, I think that's been made by saying it doesn't have to be along the frontage.
And we've corrected that.
And then allow those.
David's suggesting an apartment zone, pure and simple. Do you see an apartment zone on this spot? And either the two spots that are, that are beginning, you're, you're wanting to see commercial, so mixed use is what you're wanting to see in these two spots.
Yes.
I think all we're getting proposed is, is residential. That's why I'm saying, if that's what we're going to consider, I'm not saying that we, I would prefer mixed use, but I don't see mixed use yet.
Brody has suggested, though, that we might be able to entice, like we've enticed over at Giza and other places, we might be able to help them in the enticement of what comes into that area with use of the.
CDA.
CDA.
To incentivize people.
Incentivize people.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I'm gonna call a discussion on this tonight, and Noah, would you work, 'cause you've got, you've been given a lot of feedback here tonight. It's been a great discussion, but I'm gonna move us on because Cresta, last, last week, I hurt Cresta's feelings 'cause I had to cut her off.
Oh, no, you didn't.
I saw her dancing out the door.
I wanna thank you for your discussion tonight. I think Noah's gotten a lot, and, and I really appreciate Brody's reminding us that we can incentivize that, those businesses, those commercial properties, and we won't incentivize home occupation. There's no reason to do that.
Zero.
We might incentivize a Chipotle.
I would. I would do that.
Personally, I.
And Costco.
And I'm gonna greet me there every day.
Move more Costco on any one of these.
I'm gonna move us on to item C.
So is this going back to the twenty-fifth or until?
I think it needs to go on the twenty-fifth.
Let's move back on the twenty-fifth.
Thank you, man.
Okay, let's item C. Cassie, did you get that? Okay, let's discuss an application for the PRD.
Okay, Mr. Swain, um, he's in the audience. There you are. He's applied to amend our minimum acres requirement, PRD from four point five to three acres. And last time, we talked about visualizing, like, how many sites are there out there that could potentially have PRD? So this is not scientific by any way, but I, you know, just went through and identified the areas of open space that are undeveloped or filled or whatever, along arterials, that I could foresee seeing, seeing inquiries. And some of these properties, I have already received inquiries to build townhomes or duplexes 'cause the duplex, even a duplex, just two units, is only allowed in the PRD. So here are the numbers. There's eighty-six sites, and I provided the acreage in the second column there, or the number in the second column, the acreage on the left. So there's kind of a dividing line around three acres. So there's forty-one above three acres and forty-five below three acres. And so if we did choose to just simply remove or reduce that number to three acres, there's still forty-five properties out there that have PRD potential that we would have to figure out what to do when those landowners start petitioning the city to do something with it. But in the, in the near future, you know, some of the most popular ones that we're receiving a lot of inquiries on are over three acres at least.
Thank you for providing that.
So I look at this, and first of all, my first question is, I certainly don't want eighty-six PRDs in the city.
And, yeah, no way am I saying that we would approve that many, but.
I know, but that's, that's part of the point that I'm making is, I would never want another eighty PRDs in the city. So if I'm going to say, well, do I, what do I really think is reasonable? I mean, there are forty-one properties above three acres to start off with, and I think forty-one is a ridiculous number to say that forty-one new developments are all gonna be PRDs.
I don't think they're all gonna come forward and say, hey.
It might be over the next fifty years, too.
And so furthermore, let's go back to where we are today. We already have thirty-four properties that qualify under our current ordinance. So there's a potential that we could have thirty-four more PRDs based on what's, you, you've just shown us here tonight. Okay, so again, I don't know that we're gonna get thirty-four, but I don't think that we're cutting off the city by saying that we aren't gonna allow those fifty properties that are below three acres or that are four acres or below. That's my point. Those fifty properties do not make or break our city being PRD. They can fill in with a number of other options that don't have to be that.
The main reason why the planning commission recommended removal of anything on this was just because then you can say, is this the appropriate place, period? And if it's not, then it's not.
For me, the primary thing, more than anything, is having a safe access and good flow of traffic. A PRD is a higher-dense zone, so that means you have to have some kind of flow of traffic. So to me, fundamentally, you have to have two access points. I really think when you get below that three, every one of those that I looked at that's below even four, you end up with those two access points. you end up with those two access points on the same road. I think the most successful properties that we've seen, the bill is being one of them, the access points are on opposite side of the development. It means all of your traffic isn't going to the exact same spot on the exact same feeder road. So, to me, that's a reason to say no to smaller PRDs, cause you can't get that.
So you're saying you'd rather have commercial in the spot?
I, I, first of all, I'm talking about just the PRD zone, not this spot.
Well, except for that you're talking about having access off of the same road and as this example that we've been looking at in, in a separate-
I am not gonna change the zone for one example.
Oh, I know, I know, but I'm just saying that you're, you're also referencing problems that are possibly do, that you're, you're stating your problems to this. So the alternatives-
It's problems to all of the small ones.
Okay, but your alternatives to this though are commercial.
No, there's more alternatives to that.
No, 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 I'm talking about to this specific place, right? So what else is gonna go there?
I don't think that's fair to say this property determines what we make a whole zone about.
What I'm, what I'm asking is, what is the proposal, what, what do you envision for this area?
Okay, I'm gonna answer your question, but I wanna be very careful to say this.
Sure.
It's not our job to tell people what they put on a spot, it is our job to say what doesn't fit. Because there are people that could come forward and say, I have a plan to make this commercial, I have a plan to make this business office professional, I have a plan to make this residential, I have a plan to make this something that we don't even have right now, maybe another apartment zone or whatever. There are lots of things it could be, that's not the application.
Like, so-
The application is, does this fit, and I say no.
The act, the, the question though that I'm posing is that no matter what you put there, the traffic access in this particular spot is only gonna have the access off the road. So you're saying because you're gonna limit, you know, it has to have alternative places in and out, then nothing can go there?
I'm saying you have to have alternative, even in neighborhoods, we have to make them have more than one in and out. Even every neighborhood that we allow, every single one. You can't put them in the same spot. And when you have a development that is really small, that's all you've got. So when we say that we have an area that's really small, I'm saying we can't allow higher density to make that problem even enhance.
The, the thing that I'm bringing out though is the fact that commercial will actually bring more traffic than residential does.
I don't think that's no.
I, I, actually, I think that's pretty basic.
I don't think that's no, cause we don't know what kind of commercial it is.
Yes, no?
It could be less, depending on the commercial.
There's a lot of variables, but there's some manual IT, international traffic engineers, and you can look up different uses and compare them. Generally speaking, commercial has more traffic than residential, but there's a lot of variables.
Whenever somebody builds a, a, something, they have to consider, does what I want to do with it fit on this property? So, could it be? Yes. Will it be? That depends on whoever buys it and uses it.
I'm just saying that anywhere in the city though, if you're saying it has to have multiple ins and outs, then you're going to, you're gonna stranglehold all these properties.
No, cause they can all be a lot of different things, they don't have to be a PRD.
I'm not talking about just PRD, I'm talking about commercial or whatever you do, if you're, if you're saying it can't be PRD, PRD with.
First of all, they can all be residential, uh any of them could be residential.
I don't think you're gonna have like single family homes on one thousand west.
Now you're talking about that problem, let's not confuse the two.
Right. No, I'm, I am, I'm throwing it out there, that they can't all be-
You can't say that, that the arguments of this property make us change the entire zone.
But your statement was that they could all be residential.
They could be.
Seth, are you still with us?
It has to be.
Seth?
Yeah.
Do you want me to try, what are your feelings?
Alright, what was that?
What are your feelings?
Yeah, so I think that as the land use authority, we should have the ability to decide on a case by case situation. If something's presented, somebody should have the ability to present a plan that um they think is feasible. We're the land use authority and we should have the legislative ability to say yes or no if it meets safety needs or otherwise. So I am not um opposed to reducing the, the limit, and I think that um we shouldn't inhibit uh somebody's ability to decide if they want to develop their property in a, in a particular acceptable use, and, and then we can decide at that point. So I'm not overly concerned with the size.
Thank you. Lisa?
I'm of that opinion, when we came up with the four and a half, it was kind of an arbitrary, and I, it wasn't arbitrary in that we didn't think about it. We had so many opinions about it that we finally kind of compromised. Um but I do think that there is a lot to be said, and this isn't, speaking of this specific one, this is just in general, that if somebody approaches us with saying that they want to do a duplex or something, and we all feel like, yeah, that's actually a good fit, but they are dealing with two acres or something, and, and not doing a large, anyway. Basically, that everybody on the council has an understanding that that is a good fit, then I would rather not impede development for the sake of the number. But that's not to say that there isn't a good reason to make sure that every proposal isn't well thought out. And you aren't just allowed to do it because there is no minimum acreage or maximum acreage required.
We are the land use authority.
Yeah, just what Seth said.
Jordan?
So I'm gonna travel the line here, because I agree with a lot of what Dave said, in that I don't think you can do an effective PRD on less than an acre, or even two acres of stretching it. Now, looking at this, um I, I've just been kind of looking in this area and trying to envision what a lot of these would look like. Um I see a lot of areas where uh three acres could work. I, I, like a lot of these are not going to be PRDs, I, I'd be very surprised, a lot of these are going to be single family type residential. I, I see a lot of these going to like a R1, R2, so really, in fact, some of these are actually proposed as mixed use right now, so uh I'm not gonna dwell too much on the forty-one versus forty-five. But just thinking about access, I am concerned about access. Uh again, I don't think you can efficiently move people in and out of a one acre zone, or what's gonna happen is you're going to be putting one acre zones in the middle of R3s and R2s and R1s, I, I don't like that. So I, I am not in favor of removing the minimum. And mainly because I also don't wanna get inundated with forty-five different- That's a bit of an echo, but it's true. Yeah.
I think Seth's gonna take his phone off speaker.
Yeah, so, so I don't wanna be inundated with forty-five requests because people found out they could build a townhome on the lot next to them.
Yeah. Seth, just a suggestion, put your phone on mute. Thanks.
But that, but uh removing the requirement does not mean that we automatically zone and move these places here.
Oh, I know, but, but to, to Seth's point, we are the land use authority, and we're allowed to say, this is too small.
Look at where we are today though, people are saying, your zone didn't tell me I had to, so I didn't. And so I think if we're saying, there's certain things that you have to do to meet the standard, we need to put it in there. And a minimum acreage is one of those.
I agree, but all that being said, really the difference between where we are right now and where we are with three acres is really only seven, it's not forty-one. It's seven, maybe as high as eight or nine. And so I think in some of these, there is room to at least look at it. And, and if someone could come up with a good plan of how to move people in and out of these, uh I'm actually okay going down to three if that, I, I, I don't wanna go below three, because I, I do think that Dave rigged up some great points that as you start to get into smaller and smaller lots and trying to put a lot of people on those, access becomes issues as well as um just, it, it, safety, and, and it just doesn't, I, I'm afraid where people are gonna try and put these. Because right now it's monocular, anybody could change that, and so I wanna try and keep some minimums in place. So I, I would be willing to go to three, but I'm not going any lower than that.
Can I hear Jordan saying, the planning commission said no boundary, right?
Right.
They established no boundary.
And I-
Does anybody, so you feel positive against that, Jordan?
Yep, I would not vote for a no boundary.
I would not vote for no boundary.
Seth, how do you feel?
I mean, I think if three is, is where we're commonly agreeing with, I'm okay with that, but I do see, you know, there are lots along two thousand west and along one ninety-three that are at the two point seven, two point four, two point six uh size limits, and so I mean, if we really feel like we're okay with that, then that's fine, but I, I think that there are some considerable locations that fall just below that mark, and then we open this discussion again, when somebody, I mean, we're asking developers, again, on the mixed use development to be creative and come up with solutions for things that we're not really spelling out for them and they're not pleasing us, and then we're here saying, well, there's nothing that you can do, we're not gonna give you the flexibility or the ability to come up with something that's reasonable. So I'm, I'm kinda confused, I guess, um but three is, I'd be fine with three.
I, I think you're talking about the form-based code, and I think that's more applicable to the mixed use.
Mixed use.
This is, what are we going to allow in, in our neighborhoods?
Are there-
I'd give that.
How many of you would, are in support of the planning commission's remove the minimum?
I'm supportive of removing the minimum.
I would go three or down to nothing, I'm good. I, if we end up on three, that's fine.
If we end up on three.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd go with three.
Jordan, three is as low as you'll go?
Yep.
Okay, alright.
Cause other than that, we're gonna get inundated.
I think that you have what you need.
And to that point, I think that's-
Okay.
So uh to, to vote, I'll make that change to three, and to a voting meeting?
To a voting meeting, yeah.
And I, I do want it on record that that's not to say that I'm, that we would approve everything that came to us. It was simply a matter of saying, we will let people approach us, but that doesn't mean that we say, oh, our hands are tied, cause we allowed that many acres.
No, I agree, I-
The experience tells me that there are gonna be a lot of people who will stand in front of us and say, your ordinance only requires this, so I meet the code. That's what's gonna happen.
But right now, you don't meet the zone, because it's not zone PRD.
That's right.
That's the response.
But that's gonna be what we face, and I'm just trying to avoid some of that.
We're not gonna put this on a consent agenda, I want the debate to continue, and before we call for a motion.
Okay, thank you.
Cresta, are you ready?
Yay! Ready for us already?
Do you want to bet?
Let the fun begin.
You are the fund department.
We know, I tell you that all the time.
Cresta, do you want to?
I can, I can control this.
You wanna slide around so you're not staring at us?
I love this.
Talk to your slides.
No, I'm talking to you, you, look there.
The nice of wait here.
Welcome Chad, you're always good to have you in our-
Yes.
I'm sure he loves us as well.
Depends on the day, are you ready?
Yes.
Alright. Okay, so it's our five annual review, before I had five annual review up there, so I'm glad that we did do it last time, I was able to correct it.
But I have a five annual, you can do it twice a year.
Well, I kinda, I, I'll be honest, I kinda feel like sometimes we do, you guys have seen us a lot this last two years. So, we'll be reviewing a lot of the stuff that you've already said, but we aren't here for the five annual review. Um we wanna start out with our mission statement, that we are committed to providing citizens with a wide variety of recreational opportunities supported by our parks, personnel and facilities. Our goal is to deliver superior programs and services that meet the needs of the community in a cost-effective manner. So, we hope that we, we actually don't hope, we do, we do that every day. So, moving along, the um topics that we'd like to discuss is our organization, our vision statements, our goals and accomplishments, uh and then to recommend for increased productivity and enhanced services. Um obviously, I'm here to ask, answer any questions that you guys have, I've also asked Chad to come along and to answer questions or interject as he, as he sees, I sometimes get going and forget things, and he's right there to make sure that I don't. Um the next thing would be our current organization, as you guys know, kind of know how our department is set up. But I kinda did a quick thing for you, that we have eleven full-time employees, six part-time, three site supervisors. Any given time, we have thirty-five to forty rec assistants that help with our, and you might think that's a lot, but there are some programs that we have forty, and we're using thirty-seven on that day, because we have so many programs going on at any given time.
When does that usually happen?
Fall.
Fall?
Fall is the big one, and spring, but, but fall, we've got soccer, flag football, tackle football, and then, you know, all of our other little things inside the community center. Yeah, our soccer, and then um tennis, that's the end of like tennis and things like that, so we have a lot going on, and so any given day, we can have thirty-seven of those going.
Nice.
Um we have ten to seven, seasonals, okay, that's hopeful, that we get ten to twelve seasonals. Um we haven't had that luck, and you guys kinda know, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. And then we have two floaters, we call them floaters because with our front desk, we have to have someone there at all times, so we need to make sure that if they can't be there and the others can't cover it, we have someone that can cover it for a desk. Um so that is our organize, our organizational chart. We did things a little bit differently than, than what um the fire PD did. We have obviously a couple of different divisions with parks and rec, and then we also have our special events. And so how we did this is um I, I listed, Chad and I listed the citywide um vision statements and also the parks and recreation vision statements. And then as we go along, you'll see that the goals, the things that we've accomplished, we've made sure that everything that we're doing in our department is, is trying to go towards those goals you guys have set for us, and so you'll just see those tags on the side of those. I'm not gonna read through those, cause you guys have, have, if you guys have seen those, and you can look back at those, but that's the, the things that we are aiming for each year. You do get a packet for a reason.
Read it.
You do?
Yeah.
I thought, well, then you guys could have caused, that has, caused us a lot less problems when I said to you last time that you could read through and call us with any questions that you had, but no, we're good.
Then you were so well put together, you weren't having any questions.
Well, see, there we go.
See?
Okay, so the accomplishments that we have had this year, and you guys have been right along there with us, is we were able to complete the Centennial Interactive Water Feature um project. The linear park is almost done, um it's pretty much substantially done, we just have a, a few minor things that we need to do, and you guys need to make the decision on what we're calling it.
I mean buffalo.
And you want the buffalo, or what you want with the signs, and then that could be completed. It was a, a little long process, but we were able to complete the Parks Master Plan, pulled a few teeth, but we got it done. And we completed the regional park design, and our five-year um Parks Improvement Plan.
Thank you.
We've been, we've been busy. Um one of the things you guys might not know, and you, and you may even think that, when you see this, oh, what's the big deal? This one's a big deal, Chad can, can tell you that upgrading our Linda Vista irrigation controller is, is huge, has been huge. Um it's a two-wire system, and um we have twenty stations that go on there, and eight of those are Unix, which are battery operated. So anytime that, you know, he's had to go, or the staff's had to go and change that, it's a nightmare to have to do that.
And it's no longer battery operated?
No, it'll be a two-wire system, we're right in the process of it.
Okay.
Two-wiring the brand.
Yeah, you wanna explain that?
Yeah, two wires is- Not, not, not-
No, no.
I was gonna say, are you running a satellite, so I'm two wires?
Yeah, no, two wires, yeah. They'll explain communication.
The way you're acting around.
Yeah.
For, to each station, and what, what the biggest thing of it is, it, it helps us manage, not just, you know, obviously now, but for the future, when it comes to repairs, uh obviously the time management aspect of it, and it, I, and it allows you to isolate certain areas at a much uh-
There's also a smart controller?
Yes.
That's what I was gonna ask, you just beat me to it.
Exactly, so-
Because with all of this change that you're doing, we wanna start utilizing the IoT infrastructure entirely.
That's awesome, you'll get, we'll get notifications or anything too.
It, it, yeah, and notifies you on any kind of issue, as well as, you know, what, pays attention to the weather as well.
So you don't wait for someone to tell you there's a spout going, and four, four days later, that you're able to know.
That would never happen, honestly, so we would be on-
I know, yeah. People in my neighborhood.
I know.
Sometimes there's a lag with the communication aspect of when it gets to you, but the timeframe of you actually identifying that is so much quicker than, than uh-
So even like, you sit in the weather, like if it's raining, you can-
Yes, it, it will send it through a weather pause or, or something like that, because I mean, you know, like you might have our-
So do you get to choose?
We'll get way fewer complaints.
Do you get to choose to turn it off or to leave it going?
So if it's a significant amount of rain- If it's a significant amount, it'll, it'll shut itself off.
If it's a smart controller too, it's just the same.
Or you have, it's high wind.
And high wind, it'll also shut it off.
On your phone.
Reschedule it.
On your phone.
You have, you can do it on the computer, he can set the programs up, but then he has it, so he can run them from another-
You can get up a minute and go.
Yeah.
Same thing. One thing, I was trying to find the regional park um design, and right now it's under, it's kind of a weird spot on our website.
Okay.
Is there a way we can add that under Parks and Rec and just show it as future park and design, something like that? Cause I spent forever, I finally just found, I, I love the search engine on our website.
Yeah.
Cause I, I finally found it under like citizens and things like that, but it wasn't under parks.
Yep, no, we, we're doing that, and we've also, we're taking into cons- Yep, no, we, we're doing that and we've also, we're taking into con- uh, consideration that you had said, you know, there's some pictures and things, and we have, you know, someone in our department actually, um, started off in computer science, and so it's, we're gonna help try and get that upgraded and.
Awesome.
Fix the, the part of the parks, cause ours was already there, so it kinda got transferred over.
Yeah.
So it's not, it's, it's.
It's not sexy yet.
So we'll, we'll work on that.
Right, we request.
We will work on that.
I did request sexy.
Yes.
Very sexy, yeah.
Okay, so I know that you guys, um, you know, know about Rock Creek restroom, but that has been something that's happened in, you know, twenty eighteen. We've also implemented.
By the way, people that get on that trailhead love that that is there.
Yes.
Because it's not just used for Rock Creek, but for the trail where they'll come off and use the restroom there and then get back on the trail.
Yes.
We're so glad we could provide that service.
Well, it's a big deal.
I know.
Well, you wouldn't know how many complaints we used to get, that people along the trail couldn't use the restroom, so.
Yeah, and you've got a whole trail, you're on a walk, it's a problem.
We've made it, didn't we?
Exactly.
Yeah.
fertilizer.
Thank you.
I'm trying to make her kinda sticky.
We implemented the, a new cemetery software, um, the one that we had was like ancient, and so this has been really, really good. I know that it's been helpful with work orders and things like that, we've been able to do, and, um, it's mapped out really well, uh, it's really friend, uh.
It's user-friendly and very interactive, that you can, yeah.
Yeah. And for our citizens, cause they can get on and find their plots and look, and so it's, it's been really good. Um, as you guys know, the pulling teeth again with the cemetery ordinances, they're able to update those, which has been really good.
Good job.
Um, and then.
It was painful.
It was painful, and we have to do it a little bit again, but it won't be as painful, but we, we, we accomplish it. Um, we're continuing with the tree issues.
Cresta, how was the November cleanup? Was it less friction this year?
Yeah, a ton less.
Good, good.
Yeah.
Why is that?
Yeah, education, and it's now, we knew that it would be hard the first few times.
You kinda started it new a few, a couple of years ago, okay.
We also tried to get things out earlier, um, on Facebook and then put signs in the cemetery. Another thing that was really good, you know, Chad has suggested, we put it in the cemetery, but we really need to expand that, and so we're looking at getting signs, not only for special events, but for the cemetery and put it on different entrances of the city, so, that they see that those things are going on and it's not just when they get in the cemetery. You know, kind of, the banners, the banners.
The banners.
Okay.
I wish we could have this.
Those are a fortune.
No, we'll just do a little bit of.
See, some of this stuff, we need to make sure, if, if, if we ever get our, our social media person, I would love to go out on Facebook and say, just so you guys know, we planted a little over two hundred trees last year.
Right.
I think that will get.
At the chamber meeting, they asked if we had anybody that was in charge of our PR here in the city, and I said, we were discussing it, but they were surprised we didn't have anybody in charge of.
Another plug for that, yes. But, I mean, obviously, the linear park helped us bring a lot this year.
Yes.
And so that's why we had that many, but I, we just also wanted the list that you can see that we're, we're trying to do it in a lot of our different parks. Um, we did it in Rock Creek, cause you guys know the soil down there is not great, and so we're hoping that these ten that we put in, we'll do it and we'll be able to add more. But that's what we're, we're starting off with.
Do you have specific trees you put in, do you do different kinds, or do you have some that tend to thrive here?
We have more that tend to thrive here, we look at that.
Yeah, the, the, the soil composition obviously plays a huge end on the water table as well, and we, we, some hardy, you know, will, will, trees that really are, you know, can take on that stress. I'm a big fan of O'Blaze Maples.
And so, or some parks, we have a lot of them.
So, we have those, but that's because they usually live.
And so, yeah, because they live.
They live, so.
Just so you know, Sunset Maples do not live, they need ten years to die in a, yeah, in your yard.
Okay. We will make a note, we will make a note, Lisa, make a note, no, none Sunset.
Now we can vote Kentucky cotton trees, cause they're drought resistant and wind resistant. And they have really big can for them, there you go.
Yeah.
Well, that, you can just like shade tree.
Yeah.
Are you taking off?
Yeah. With that many trees and you're coming along, and I know that, that, um, Bernie had kinda put this in the staff and kinda stuff, we've talked about this before, there's something along, at some point, we probably need to talk about an arborist in our department, cause we're getting a lot of trees, there's gotta be a lot of maintenance done to them, we wanna keep them healthy and.
Just for the tannin layer is huge, yeah.
So that's, that's something for you guys to kinda think in the future.
So your next park maintenance worker needs to have that image resident.
I don't know if you're gonna get him for what we pay our park maintenance one, but.
We might have to pay just a little more to get one.
And you have to buy a wood chipper and you're gonna have to buy him.
The other thing too, though, that.
Cherry picker and.
Would you want that to be a full-time person or like a, uh, I'm staying in like a service, a contract, because they have the equipment, you don't have to pay the, all of the other.
Yeah, our, our, our tree, yeah, our tree maintenance program, right now, we work with a contractor.
Okay.
That helps us, and it's, it's just the, the amount of trees that we have throughout our city, to have, we really need to be able to take an inventory on them and try to have some plan in place, and so really, at that, just at that level, to, just to know what we have and know what kind of management program we're doing to what species it is, is really half the battle. You know, when it comes to a, a large amount of work, to where they have to get up and, you know, an aerial lift or whatever, that's where.
Thank goodness for you two for yourself.
So maybe we oughta look at a proposal for a summer contract arborist, because I, I mean, clearly those guys don't do this stuff in the winter, so, if you just, I get a seasonal employee and it's a contract like your other maintenance contract that's specific to the trees.
The other thing is, is a lot of times they'll start before they leave out.
Yeah.
But, I mean, if, if, we could approve this for next year, it, it would be in this next coming year's budget, starting in the spring.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying, that's usually talking, end of February, March is when it's usually.
We'll, we'll look into all different, we, we'll look into all different ways and obviously if we, you know, go that route, then we'll bring it back to you guys. But we just wanted you to look ahead, that with this many trees and us trying to keep up on that, that we're bringing back so many trees. Yeah, see, well, see, well, you're listening, you're listening. Um, another thing that I get, it looks like it was a long time ago, but it was just in the spring of twenty eighteen, was our completion of Tuscany Park. We have refined and enhanced our park cemetery, our parks and our cemetery maintenance programs. Chad has been so good at getting all of our, all of our lists, our programs and mapping things out to make sure that everything is in place all the time. We're not gonna, it's not going to, we're very proactive now instead of trying to be reactive, um, and that, and that's due to, um, all the checklists and, and the programs we've put in place. We've also streamlined our work orders. Uh, we found that in the cemetery, we were looking back and we're like, what in the world, was this completed and who did this and what, but now we know when it was done, who it was done by, so that we can go back and ask questions if we need to, and, and so we've found that those kind of things have been really helpful. We've installed auto cleaning irrigation filters in four different sites. Um, you guys know that you guys have been aware of our, the secondary water problem that we've, we've had, and so we've actually, we had to at times go out and, and do those quite often where we had to flush it and, and, uh.
But we still have a problem with Rock Creek Park.
We do, we're still watering during the day at the Rock Creek Park and, um, you know, this, but we.
We gotta solve that one.
Well, a lot of that.
Along with the help of Public Works.
Well, a lot of that.
Cause now we got the pressure, so.
Is that for the pressure?
It's just that pressure problems, that I think a lot of that will be solved when we switch tanks.
At night, we're not getting the pressure, so when we start seeing, I think you can see the picture on the wall.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
When you start seeing those things, then we have switched over to watering during the day to, to bring it back up.
Right.
We just can't lose the park.
Yeah, and so those auto filters have been really good because they clean, so we don't have to go out, we used to have to go out daily or at least weekly and check. So the manpower of the auto cleaning has really, really helped. So the efficiency, that they, we've got them in four parks right now, right, four different sites. Right. And then we all created and implemented the athletic field use policy, which is, is gonna be the, the first year that we're really implementing that, and we're gonna see how that will go. But the people that have so far put in, like the high school, they've been really good with it.
Cool.
So, it, it's worked out. So moving on to our recreation, um, between youth sports and aerobics, our senior programs and the classes that we have and the activities, we have six thousand, this past year, we've had six thousand one hundred and seventy-five, as you can see, it continues to grow. And with that is, you know, newer programs that, um, we're trying to do and include that really don't have a lot of cost on our end because we're bringing in contracted employees. But we're, our existing programs, um, like I said, we can have anywhere to thirty-five to forty programs going on at any, any given time. And then, uh, so we've added additional leagues this year, so like our flag football, we were, we added junior high. Uh, we tried a high school, the high school did not quite pan out the way we wanted to. We wanna add a spring league because people are asking for spring, um, and then we've added like prob, uh, little kick soccer and, um, junior high soccer was our first fall last year.
Are the guys ready in the spring for football?
We start soccer in March, so.
There's ways, ways to give it a little jump.
Yeah.
Take it a going. Alright.
We, we start soccer mid-March.
You gotta be friends with the woodchucker.
That's right. The woodchucker, the grandpa.
And we've added, you know, the additional programs, one of our favorites that we've had is our adaptive soccer program. It's not a large program, but it's, it's, you know, to, to kids that don't usually have the opportunity. Um, we've had, you know, fifteen, so that have signed up in the last two years, but they love it and, um, parents love it. It's really low cost for us, and, um, so, you know, that, that's one that we've added. You guys know that we've added pickleball, we had our very first league, we've kind of ended that, and that's been really good. But before that, we had, uh, pickleball on Tuesdays and Thursdays where the senior citizens, and actually, it wasn't just, they started to ask senior citizens, but now tons of people are coming to play, um, and they're there from nine to noon on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and they actually, when we don't have our league going on, they come Monday, Wednesday, Friday to play. Um, so that's really helpful, the usage of the community center.
Nice, good.
Quite often.
Keep it full.
Yes, we've added our baseball, softball clinics, and last year, just our homerun derby, which was a lot of fun, and then educational classes. And like I said before, we've increased contracted structures, um, and not only with that, but we've also, you know, partnered with, um, the Arts Council and other things where they come in, so our facility is fully, like, a large amount of time. Now, it's where you guys really wanna talk about money.
I'm not, yeah, I'm probably just.
That was part of the fun, okay, is we did a cost analysis, which we were, we were asked to do on all of our programs, and they are all paying for themselves right now. We did find some things, as you just saw, that we asked you to raise the baseball fee, um, we also found that in, in tackle football, it's really close, because our numbers with tackle football are going down.
Interesting.
But we, all the costs are still there. And so that one, we're gonna relook at, and, um, we've already talked to Steve and we're gonna, when we do the fee, another fee schedule and.
Why did you think that's going down?
I think it's not, right, anything. One of the things is you can play flag football, so not everybody has to play tackle, so that helps the younger crowd.
And, and I would say also that there's, because there's more things to choose from.
Yeah, you've got a lot of kids turning to lacrosse.
Yeah.
So if you did like, the numbers of like lacrosse and flag football, football, then the numbers are still climbing.
Well, we never had lacrosse before, like, that was unheard of.
No, it's still climbing.
The rich kids getting.
It still is, it costs, it costs a lot. Football's the same way, the equipment is more expensive, but, um, lacrosse is really expensive.
And I think concussion awareness on a sport like football is, some parents are not insisting your kid be in football.
Just denote, there's more concussions in soccer than.
There are.
You're right, and I'm not saying that there's one better, I'm just saying.
And just play, just run and jump, and, and.
I'm just saying, people are more aware and not forcing every kid to play, but I think years ago, it was like, if you didn't play, you weren't in anything.
Well, you also need to look at, um, the different time commitments and stuff kids have these days, because tackle football is a huge time commitment. They are practicing four days a week and then playing on Saturday too.
Right.
It's a huge commitment to play. And then just so that you guys know, to factor in on stuff that helped with the, those, um, our profits, was over nine thousand dollars we got back from our contracted employees, which we don't have to do a whole lot on that, we just sign people up.
Awesome.
And they take care of that, and so that's where we've really tried to push and try to get more people in to be.
What we could say publicly, thank you, thank you, thank you, because four years ago, we were asking me to do more of this, and now we're seeing that it is really paying off. So thank you, thank you, thank you, for all your efforts.
Absolutely. Um, moving on, the accomplishments for the community center is our increased usage. We really don't have a day that something's not going on in the community center, whether it's in the classrooms or the gyms, and most of the time, it's both, and I know that was something. You guys, I don't know why this picture got cut off, but we just redesigned the gym floor layout, um, this year, and if you guys have been over there with different, like, painting that was done and then added the pickleball, it looks so good.
Okay.
It looks really, really good, people can, uh, comment on that, I know that Bernie put that in our manager's report.
Did you guys, did you guys, did you get your link fixed?
Oh, no, that's coming.
Oh, not the.
Don't you worry. That's still coming.
Okay, alright.
One thing that we're really appreciative that you guys allowed us to do was to add a building maintenance technician. That has been night and day, because we've been able to have somebody in our community center, and we've been able to have, they've been able to be proactive instead of, you know, reactive, because they have so much to do throughout the whole city. So having someone there actually in the community center has been, I mean, Chris has been amazing, we've been able to do a lot of things and, and, um, a lot of, um, annual things to keep up on, so that we're gonna be able to, you know, make this last longer. This building's been here thirteen month, thirteen years and like three months.
Isn't that amazing?
And, and we're starting to see the wear and tear on it, obviously, as you guys will see as we, we go ahead with that. We all installed an auto cleaning irrigation filter stair at the community center too. There was, there was a time that there was a really big problem there that we were, weren't even being able to get through a cycle. Um, and so the, the recreation staff would have to go out, cause the parks were too busy to do that, and so that was kind of where we first started our auto cleaning and seen how it worked really well. And it's been one of our things. And then this last year, we've also integrated a new software, and I can't say that we love it yet, because there's a lot of things that we have to learn, but there's things that it can do that we couldn't do before, like text, if people sign out for text messages, then we can send out text messages and emails and things that are, it's better, um, for that, but we haven't got fully into that yet, but that's something that we're, we're kinda proud of. Um, going forward is our special events, um, the Easter egg hunt, we had twenty-eight thousand, we're hitting thirty this year. So, uh, each year, we're trying to expand that. Um, Heritage Days, we've really worked on trying to get better entertainment, as you can see this lovely picture.
Druity! Like the Druity!
Druity!
Shaking what my momma gave me.
We had some, um, dancers come up, some, uh, Polynesian dancers, and they brought people up on stage, and so we're trying to utilize some of our money to do that better and to bring better entertainment to get people in the parking, especially on Friday night, we kinda feel like that's our Syracuse night. Um, so we try to do that on those nights, so, um, some of the things that we've done with the Heritage Days and Pumpkin Walk is to include, like our other entities, like the Arts Council's been huge, um, in with Heritage Days and Pumpkin Walk, you know, they've, they've been, last year, they performed as a band, they sang, you know, there was so much that they did, and then the big band dance during Pumpkin Walk. Um, and the museum, I don't know if you guys got to go to that night at the museum, um, but.
I didn't go that night.
Yeah.
We, we were over at the, uh.
You were all there, freezing today, it was a, it was a cold night, and they, they got a lot of people over there, which is good. Um, and then just so that you guys know how many outside events we have, I don't think people realize that we coordinate sixty-six.
I missed the lantern festival.
It was pretty, it was a lot of people.
I didn't know about it.
It was a lot of people, for next time, we'll, and that one is, maybe that's what we need to do better. Well, what we need to do better in that sense is to help advertise for those events that we, um, that we're, we're not, you know, a, a sponsor on, but that's happening in our cities.
It's definitely our city, I think we get, it does help us.
Yeah, and so, yeah, we just wanted to show that there are sixty-six, you know, events that we have to coordinate, um, and then including the Miss Syracuse pageant. You know, the Arts Council concerts and production, they bring so many people, you know, from outside the city that really help, and then you guys would be amazed at how many family reunions we have to, Chad has to put up with, like us.
Yeah.
Not put up with, it's a good thing. That was a wrong word, so.
Chad, I don't remember.
So what, what's our most popular part? Um, I would probably say Jensen's our most popular, except now with Centennial, the splash pad.
Oh, yeah, that's.
The, I can't even tell you how many people we already have reserved.
Oh, wow.
Already waiting to get in, it's, so.
That's exactly what we were hoping for.
Yes, so Jensen is, and then, um, and both pavilions are get reserved, so, and then you got the people that just show up at the other one and don't reserve it, but, there's a lot of parties that are already planned out there, we've already got a ton that are doing that, so it's exactly what we wanted it to happen. And then I just wanted to show you that, you know, we're bringing in those volunteer projects, we had a hundred and forty-two.
And City Fens Trail, Druity's boy.
I know.
And Druity, good job.
Yeah, that one was a, that one was a big, huge project, um, and it was very helpful, all of them are so helpful, um, and we're grateful for it, but we have, you know, oh, sixty-five, a hundred hours of volunteer hours, um, and that was something that the council asked us to do.
And you think it will have, we don't have all the Eagle Scout projects going on anymore.
And you think it will have, do you imagine we can't have all the Eagle Scout projects going on anymore?
I, I think a little bit.
Well, a lot of times it was youth groups, not necessarily Eagle Scout.
Well, and you know, maybe there will be still a lot of that.
Well, I, I mean, I think that we'll, there's a lot of, all, sorry, obviously take a decline, but we just had one that was turned into us today that was a youth group of three hundred that they wanna do, you know, in April. For, so they can help us with the cleanup. So I don't think that we're going to take a dive on, on that, and we'll still promote that and.
Good.
So, um, and then I didn't put this on there, but I just wanted you guys to know that we had one thousand four hundred and ninety-seven coaches in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen.
Wow.
That's how many people volunteered for the city.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Go see.
So if we actually put the hours that our coaches put into it, it would be astronomical. Just our football coaches alone, it's crazy how much time and effort that they put in. Okay.
I wanna see the car with this picture.
Oh, we don't know. We don't know how that, we don't know how the car, um, that.
The, the car like backed out left?
It is.
It's at the cemetery, and this is.
It was a hit and run?
Yes. Most of, we had that happen three times, four times.
Cause their car is very damaged.
Yeah.
I don't know how they got, however they're, what the hell, nobody noticing, but.
It was a morning.
Antifreeze trail following.
But it was, it's happened four times, and that's why that's one of the things we'll talk about, because it is very expensive to replace. But we wanna.
Four times? So that's intentional.
No.
No, these are like people just suddenly going north or south and then.
They get cheap laugh.
Unless you really hate your car, then what are we trying to do? Escape there?
It's a long, straight road, and people take naps.
Get a little side.
I can't remember what's, because it's called across the street.
Plus it, or utility aid.
Utility. We know, we haven't been able to find who it is, but we, one time we heard that a semi had swung around there and hit it, but we.
That could be happening.
People called us and we weren't able to, they didn't have a.
License plate.
Yeah, well, yeah, they just told us. We just saw a semi run over your fence.
Oh, well, you know what? They probably didn't feel it.
No.
Seriously. And then they're probably like, what happened to my trailer? Somebody bashed into my trailer.
Four times.
That's exactly what happened, I meant to.
Okay. So now that we went through and told you all of our goals and the accomplishments that we've done, um, we just wanna talk to you about some things that we think, um, can increase productivity and enhance our services. Um, we're gonna continue to do our, um, irrigation efficiency and our water smart locks, um, by, you know, replacing our controllers, continue to replace filters. Like we said, we've got that done in four parks, but we still have many, many more parks to do that in.
That's a really green spot of grass, though.
Yeah.
That's where, that's where the little things were.
A little, little bit.
Yeah, it's Rock Creek Park where we're.
It'll come up, but it'll go just right there and then.
Oh, just burn it out.
Yeah, burn the water right there.
And the pressure, you know, that's that nighttime when we're just not, we haven't figured out why it's doing it yet. But in the, in the daytime, that's why. I wish we had a picture out, we have picture check, of what it's after we've started watering during the day. It looks, it comes back, so.
We should build a really big water tower.
Yeah.
That's great.
Um, we're going to continue to update, um, and enhance our amenities and with recreational opportunities, which will correspond with our five-year project plan. And as you guys know, we meet with you guys and, and update that yearly. We're talking about stuff actually really monthly, because there's things that change and we figure that, you know, we need this, and that's why we come back to you guys and say, yeah, that's not gonna work what we thought, but we'll continue to do that. Um, the staffing issue, you guys have heard this a lot, and Brody went over a lot of the staffing, um, issues with you guys, and, and kind of our plan for the next few years and how we can, you know, accommodate that. But that does not help us with the lack of seasonals. And.
Plum chat.
By the way.
If I could, I would.
Just, just so you know, I mean, I know across the state of Utah, they said that unemployment's two point eight percent, but, and this was in that economic forecast, the Clearfield-Davis area, like one point eight percent.
Yeah.
That's why you guys are.
Oh, we understand.
Yeah.
We understand. And we want you guys to know, like, we have fought outside the box like crazy. We've used the inmates. We even tried temp, sort of temporary services last year. Um, he lasted for a week. Is that what, was it even a week?
Seriously?
Yeah, he came, he was like, oh, this is, this is too hard to work. That's big sad. I'm outta here. So that lasted a week. Um, we lowered the age to sixteen-year-olds, so they are, obviously don't operate any of our large machinery or our trucks or stuff, but, um, we've had them come and help us on the weekends and after school, so we've done those. Um, you know, I know that, like, Robert had talked about bringing in part-time. Um, the bad thing about us for just hiring part-time is because we need those forty hours during the season. So it's not like we can have them work the twenty hours and then twenty hours, you know, on a regular basis, so that they don't go over their hours year, year round. Um, it's, we need those seasonal employees that can work forty hours a week.
We're gonna hire a fourteen, don't they?
Yeah, they'd be hired fourteen.
We don't want a fourteen-year-old out there. We have them as, I love them to pieces, and we have them as rec assistants, but I don't think we want them out there on the mowers and the tremors.
Right, right. For actual parking. They, no, I, I wonder about retirees.
We try.
They probably.
I'm happy to deal with.
I'm just thinking, I wonder if that's something that.
Yeah.
Kinda like golf courses, too. Golf courses are very, you know, they're very good at attracting, you know, those, those individuals, but, um, you know, we only have a certain amount of bigger mowers, and then there's a lot of the, the work that is pretty labor intensive.
Intensive, yeah.
And so it's, it's only one or two individuals that would be willing to do that, but.
We need to start calling them our missions. That's, your last thing sounds like a box right there. We need to have it be church calling. Baptist, doesn't matter what religion, just have it be a calling for you.
But, you know, you, Brody gave us a good idea, and he said, you know, call around to some companies, um, and see kind of what they charge. We always benchmark against the cities, but also we have a lot of, um, businesses that are landscape businesses. And so we, we're wanting to see like, why are they not coming to us? And they're paying them anywhere from fifteen to eighteen dollars an hour when we benchmark them, and that's why, you know, that's where you're gonna go. So that's something that we, you know, that we might need to look at, too, for that.
But I did like your idea of instead of just doing seasonal, doing it as part-time, or what was it you said?
Well, the part-time, we would love to be able to do that. The problem with part-time is, is you have to have them year-round, which is fine. But during the growing season, those six months, we need people working forty hours a week.
So they need more to bump up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
So it's kinda like college.
You, but you can't, see, you can't, if you hire someone who's part-time, and you, if you, we could have them work forty hours and it would be fine, if they were willing to take off six months, but most people are not willing to do that. And so that's the problem with us with part-time, how it doesn't, doesn't really benefit that much.
But also, when the colleges went from quarters to semesters, it, it really shortened what's available during the summer. That's.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, it's really true. Became a problem for them, because it really shortened down the hours they could get from people.
Yeah.
Let them go, rather than getting trained.
Yeah, that window seems to be getting smaller and smaller.
We get them like the first or second week in June, and they're done the third week in August, second week in August.
And a lot of times they'll leave a week early. They go and set up their apartment or whatever, and, yeah.
So we've made it work, and these guys have just worked their tails off after everybody leaves. Like last year, um, the middle of August, we had one seasonal.
Yeah.
Buddy in, yeah, so.
Is, is it because you, you can't, you don't just meet them for the time, like, when does your season start?
We like.
March.
March.
Yeah, so they're, everybody's still busy.
Yeah, March until November, the end of October, is usually where, November first is usually when we end there.
So the real issue is, is you need to figure out what to do within between the four months that you don't. If you had a use for them, then it would be different, but.
Yeah.
And the money to pay them.
That's the problem.
And the money to pay them.
That's the problem. I think, I think I can, I think we can find a use for them, Dave, it's just the money.
Well, so, okay, so that's where I guess is part of the solution.
I gotta fill the, the void.
Well, that's part of the solution then, is that if you have uses for them, I would rather hire a couple year-round and have at least a couple of good ones, and figure out what you're gonna get value out of them in the offseason, than have to continually rehire and not be able to bring them back at all, cause something's better than nothing. I mean.
Worst case, if there was no plan.
Well, I, I think that there's, I think that. I think that there's like a misconception.
There's a whole different set of.
That our department and parks works from March until November, and then we don't have a lot to do. There is so much that we do on the offseason to get ready for our season. Like, there's so many projects, you just think of that.
Turn a couple of those seasonals into full-time employees, that at least have somebody rather than have nobody.
No, I, I, that's.
I think they actually requested exactly that.
You're something.
Well, we haven't, perhaps we've done that, so.
And there's the cost of.
Yeah, no, we, we know what it is, but that's, I mean, we're just coming to you with the problems that we have.
Right.
And trying to get everything accomplished.
The better right back.
Problems, problems.
Yes. Yep, we'll, we'll move on.
Yeah. No, we're actually here in our session. We can also.
I mean, we hope, well, we don't hope for that, but that's what.
Just saying.
Moving along, because we've. The equipment, um, we want you guys to look ahead for is a truck with a duck bed. We have two right now, but one of those has been given to us by, um, Public Works for years, and it's twenty years old. And it's at the point where it's, we don't know if it's gonna run or if it's not gonna run anymore. Um, the other one's five years old.
Left door, right there.
Yeah. Yeah.
But you worked for a while.
It did. He, uh, so, the other one's five years old, which is working great. Um, but we are so busy at the cemetery now and everywhere else, that we kind of need the two. Cause one needs to stay at the cemetery as much as possible, because that's where we, you know, have, we do a lot of work at the cemetery with the, the bed.
No, yeah, it just, we can't pull from that.
Yeah.
Leave it in the end, and so it's, it's, you know, as much as we're moving material around and, and, and all of our projects and stuff. Uh, I mean, it's, it just obviously depends on which. We're looking for a smaller shop.
Yeah, we're not looking for.
A one-ton or, or something of that size, you know, with a, a standard-sized bed, but it's anywhere between thirty-five and forty-five, depending on, you know, what size of truck you get.
So not terrible, but still terrible.
It's, it's, yeah, it's.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Um, we'll continue with the tree initiative, and obviously we have the cemetery expansion improvements that are coming up, that you guys are gonna have to be aware of, and more money, more money, more money.
Just gonna make sure we have a.
Yeah, seed you up for a snow raider.
Lisa?
Lisa.
We need, we need a rail.
What's a spider that hangs from a?
We didn't say, like, just, that was just trivial, but we just like, I'm gonna save you all this time, like, okay, I gotta pass this.
No, we appreciate that. The other thing I didn't mention, mention was the rake-o-back. And if you guys saw what our guys had to do to rake up all the leaves, come on over during Pumpkin Walk, and we're trying to do that. And they are blowing all the leaves, and then you put them on the tarp, and then you shove them into the back.
So it's the rake-o-back as that thing?
So this one is, yeah.
Does it shred them? We had this little baby one, it's awesome. Does it shred and pack?
Yeah, yeah, yep, exactly. And it's, it's about twenty-five. Can we sell the leaves as fertilizers?
You should just fail it, you know? That would probably take so much less manpower.
Exactly, and the thing is, is it, is honestly, we, we, just that window that you have to actually do that and perform that maintenance is, is so small, and you just don't get it, and then it's, you know, you see it come in the winter, and as you're plowing, and it gets in the gutters, it just starts making everything else messy.
And kills your grass with the leaves.
Yeah, and, yeah, it just suffocates it.
So what, how much do these run?
About twenty-five thousand.
So big, giant. Okay.
Yeah, you, you, yeah, you tow it around.
It's not for your backyard. Not at all, yeah.
We have a tractor.
I could do some.
That'd be nice. But could I borrow?
I only need it for ten minutes.
What is ten minutes going on?
You know what? That's the thing, we make more money.
We'll rent it out.
Rent it out. We'll bring it, park it right near your house.
Yeah, well, no, we'll charge the man hours double.
I said.
Or people.
Ah, now you're big for nine minutes.
Okay, next one. Now, I know you guys, this is like, we were going, we were going to put a picture of a horse that's been beat and beat and beat.
Oh, good.
Oh, we probably shouldn't say that. Strike that from the record. Not like able to say, but anyways.
You don't feed a dead horse.
Right. We, we have, we have talked to you guys about this a ton, but we can't have a deep dive without mentioning that this is one of our huge needs. We've done the research, we've toured, um, told you our recommendation.
Is that your makeshift swimming pool?
Yeah.
That we're seeing there.
Oh, I've been there when it's, yeah, that's fun, pushing stuff through.
Why don't we build a new splash pad?
It's probably not gonna be make health code.
Insurance, no idea. Are you actually in the third arm?
Um, we've, we have a location, just so that you guys know, we're in the process of doing the, um, wetland delineation, and they will have that, we've got the company to do that, and we will have that, the engineer. Um, they have to do it like in April, May and do the report then to make it February.
Can they give us like two days' notice, or you're pumping all that out?
Yeah.
Yeah. When, when do they do it?
Um, they said they can start doing some preliminary stuff now, but, um.
We had to do it in July.
No.
Seriously?
Yeah, they, they have to wait.
In a, when it's time.
And they look at the soils.
Yeah.
You know, it's, you're hydraulic soils and stuff like that, really.
But there's a window that the, that they'll accept it.
You can look in that building, you can see where the old doors were on the other side of the building, and why they sloped it down, I don't, yeah.
We don't know. And if only we had work orders to track who did it. I don't know, but, you know, back then. So, um, we're just at the point where we just need to know from the council how we need to proceed and go forward, so. Um, the next thing is our programs and classes. What you guys may know is there's not all the kids that come out and play sports anymore. We were at a conference, and a lot of the classes were about esports. That's kind of like the new thing. And it's trying to get kids that are not interested. Huh?
Just like Madden?
Yeah, like, all, like.
Yeah, it, you know.
All different sorts of things.
Yeah, all different aspects of it.
But, and it's to get kids that are not interested in sports, but this is their interest, to still be able to get them to socialize some way. And to get out, and to, you know, do something that they enjoy.
So get out basically.
Uh-huh.
Get active.
But the question that I had when I saw this slide was, do they still have that place over in the rush?
I, I didn't see it. No. It didn't last a year.
They moved over to Leighton Hills Mall, and I think they didn't last there either.
It didn't last there either.
So we have to think outside the box.
Because the equipment is the real expense to esports. It, it's not that, I mean, you could load up the kids and they would pay for it, but the equipment.
It is, you know, and, and actually Brody brought this to my attention, and we, you know, we have to think outside the box. Maybe we have to do some leagues where we can get people involved, um, from their homes, so that they're there. But then we create something to bring everybody to meet each other, the tournament at the end, or, um, having like a get-together, so that they kind of know and get to know each other.
Yeah, the, the idea is to build community.
Yeah.
Yeah.
By, by still, uh, but, but still offering things to kids that don't, aren't interested in esports.
Create a Minecraft league, you'd have thousands.
Yeah, so those are the kind of things that we wanna kind of look at. We wanna add to our adaptive, uh, program. Uh, you know, there's basketball leagues, there's other things that we can do with the adaptive program, so that's what we wanna do. Um, we'd really like to create a track and field running club, and we partner with the schools, um, to do that. Obviously, add additional, um, educational classes. We've added pickleball leagues, it's huge. They wanna do night classes. Obviously add additional educational classes. We've added pickleball leagues, it's huge, they wanna do night classes, we wanna kind of keep that going. Um, we don't know how well we'll go indoors if we get some outdoors, but we're gonna, you know, work and see how it works both ways. And then, um, we would love to do some outdoor recreation stuff, you know, get our fishing program up and going and get, get kids, maybe we have some programs where we use the bus and take them different places to hike or different activities to kind of get them away from just the normal recreational stuff that we do. Um, biking classes, concealed weapon classes, things like that that kind of get people involved in one of the outdoor.
They used to, they used to do the hunter safety.
Yeah. The hu- there's so many places that kind of offer that, um, and it didn't.
It was very difficult when I was trying to find a place for, for my own, for my sons.
Yeah.
There, for a couple of years, I'm like, yeah, we'll just sign up and then their last two kids, it was like, I don't know where to go.
Well, and it was weird, cause when we did it, that was one of the programs that wasn't successful for us. We only had, you know, I think there's three people that signed up.
I think you can get a lot of it online now.
Yeah.
For hunter safety?
You have to do a shoot.
Yep, we, we added the, the hand radio class, which was really good and he was great and it cost us anything.
Well, luckily.
It was only four people, but, you know, it was something that we offered at a time, we didn't have anything else, and so those kind of things are, are good. Um, and then obviously the clinics we wanna keep going is soccer, volleyball, and we wanna do some basketball clinics. Um, the recreation and community center, again, I told you that it's thirteen years old and there's stuff. This is something that Corinne brought up and we'd already wanted to talk about it.
It, it shouldn't be that hard to paint that room, it didn't need to.
Well, that was just done, just so that you know, that was done like eight months ago.
What?
There's just so much usage in that community center.
But like, some dirty kids, it's like, run to his dirty body, I'll.
We know. We know, and we had, we had Chris, our.
Make your head suffer.
I was, I was just shocked. People that, my.
But yeah, it was done eight months ago, so that's why, you know, we brought, and we had our um, our maintenance, Chris, our maintenance guy, do that. And so we looked at doing, having more of, you know, somebody come in and maybe do it.
We'd almost like wanna do like textured granite walls, so they'd nobody drubbing on anything.
To repaint all the walls in the community center would be forty thousand dollars.
Oh, monkey.
Obviously, we can, you know, do like just the classrooms or just the, but for the whole community center, we had it, it was forty thousand. The carpet, as you know, is, the wear and tear on that is bad throughout the whole, like, in our offices, I think, besides some of our desks, that's original.
Thirteen years.
Do you need carpet or could you change it to something else?
We've looked at different, the quote we got was thirty thousand and it's even the carpet that you can get that's the one to replace it. But we've, we've looked at other options.
Same concrete.
Or that'll, that'll make your back ache like crazy, but what if you did like the wood looking tile or something that probably gives you really good.
No, there's, there's tile.
It's actual tile that looks like wood.
Yeah, but that's hard on you too. You walk on tile too long, it just aches.
But I think you have to look at, most of the people that are using it, we might have to do something in our offices, but most people are not in there for very long. It's not like they're doing it out of cost. So there's all, all different ways we can look. It's just something that really needs to be looked at.
I like, I like the carpet square area.
Yeah.
See, you can take out, especially if you get one area that's warm and worn.
That's what my work is doing, that are replacing everything with those carpet squares.
It would.
Cause you just, you just replace the high traffic areas and leave the rest.
Yeah, so that's, that's kind of really good.
Yeah, she's in the stoppage time.
Okay. Sorry. The roof and the HVAC, um, we, we told you about this, and we're still having the issues. Every year we have a, the company that was, you know, had the warranty come, look, it is still leaking and it's leaking in more spots now. So there's something, we're gonna look at different companies and bring them in and try to figure out what that problem is. It's been going on for thirteen years and we really cannot find the issue. They all tell us that it's, you know, the roof or it's because it's raining in and it's getting into our ducts. We just don't know what the problem is, but we need to get it resolved.
Did you pick the place for TVs yet?
Yeah, well, yep. Well, maybe, cause the storage is a problem and storage, you can see all of the things on the back wall. That's how it is all the time and people just shift it around, cause there's no storage. So there is a possibility in those little premises that we could build some places to store so you could hide that stuff, cause people get really annoyed when they're trying to use those classrooms. Have to push it out into the hallway, have to push it back in, so there's just no storage, so that's something. Um, obviously, when we think about building um, we think about the ideal of expansion. Um, one of those things is a locker room and showers, cause I feel like, we feel like, that's what stops people from wanting to come at lunch hour, work out and do stuff, cause there's just not stuff to do. Um, our, yes.
There's some liability issues when you start hiding locker rooms.
No, I, I get it, but if, if we're trying to.
Shorten the bathroom.
Okay.
Except that you're naked in shower stalls more so than in the bathroom stall. I'm, I'm, yeah, I think you're.
I mean, you are.
You're not.
Be digressed, be digressed.
Anyway, I can see it, it's positive.
Yeah, but those are the things, when you're talking about getting more usage in the community center so that we're paying for more, those are the things that we don't have. A weight room, um, an aerobics room, those are the things that we don't have that, that could benefit us. Um, special events, to try to enhance those again, um, using the museum and arts council are something that we're really, we're gonna, you know, look into doing. We're talking, giving them, you know, days at heritage days and things at heritage days to expand on. Um, Annie, who's at the museum, she is wonderful and she has so many great ideas. Um, she's, we've talked to her and we've got, I've got Leslie going over to their board meetings and things like that, so that we can all um be on that. But one of the things that I'm thinking of doing is kind of adding to our Easter egg hunt by doing something that day. Um, so that's how we're trying to do an expansion.
They talked about that day. Yeah, they said, you know, Easter egg hunts start at ten, it's over by ten oh two.
Yeah.
We could have the event.
And then, and then, and then it does.
I know, it is.
For thirty thousand.
I've been telling you this, you should kinda hide them better.
It's not really a hunt, it's more of a scramble, but people love it.
I lost my girl there once, I love it.
Then we have the museum thing that day and then that afternoon, we're actually gonna do our home run derby. So, we're trying to, you know, just expand on, on low cost things, doing it that way. Um, we wanna add a five K, we've had other people doing five Ks, um, we as a city want to actually do one for ourselves and, and put a five K. We haven't got into all of that yet. And then our winter event, you guys, every year we wanna do something, but I and Chad and Bro- everybody does not wanna do something that is not, does not look good. You know, these other cities, when they compare, they're spending all this money on putting lights and then we're gonna put a couple of strings in the park, it just doesn't look good. So if we wanna get away from having to, you know, think about the lights, or we've talked about doing it along the linear park where there's a lot of trees, but we'd have to put in um electricity, cause we didn't do that over there, but we just don't wanna do something just to do something.
All the things we did do and we did put in electricity.
Well, we, we.
Except for shit, cause I wanna.
We remember the discussion, the thing that we didn't want to.
You didn't, you didn't want to.
It was expensive.
But, yeah, if you want to.
Yeah, in fact, I had a, an older couple email me and say, we've watched all these hallmark programs where they have a tree lighting ceremony, can we do one?
Yeah.
Well, sure, we'll add it to the list.
Yeah, but that's something you can do.
We don't have a lot of mature trees in there.
Exactly, that's the problem.
That's a problem.
Yeah, but that's something that we wanna, and so we're li- looking at maybe a winter event, um, where we do something with the arts council and the museum and the schools and try to do something fun that way, to kind of have, yeah, to kind of have a winter event, but, and then also if we wanna go the right direction of the linear park, that's gonna be the, where it's gonna be seen most, but that's a lot of trees, so we're gonna have to get a lot of volunteers who will be on the job for that.
You know, and we don't, I was, I was thinking about that, we don't want people, we don't want a lot of people walking over there, because it's really not a real safe place.
Well, I, it's just that they drive by to see it. That's what I'm saying, there's really, we don't have a location for something, I think everybody envisions this great lighting thing. We don't have the money and we haven't got the place that's really.
Turn the lights on City Hall.
Well, yeah.
Aren't, aren't there a couple, aren't there a couple of, I think it was like a museum, that are bigger?
There are, there are, but then it's one tree.
Couple.
So you get what I mean, so we might be able to do something in the museum and do that, but that's what I'm saying, I, we don't ever wanna do an event that everybody comes and they're really underwhelmed.
Oh, true.
That's the thing, when we do something, we do it right.
Please don't ask.
So, so the winter event that the museum did this year, they had some hay rides and some things that we can, we can piggyback off of that and make more of a, you know, an event that, that can be good. So that's what we're looking at. And then we want to um just continue to support and recruit outside events. Things that we don't have to do a lot with, but that will bring people into the city, city that will help with the economy.
Sure.
You know, and then, that's it. So, if you have any questions, but more importantly, we wanna ask if you guys have any suggestions or anything you'd like to see from us.
Other than the tree lighting.
Other than the tree lighting.
Thank you so much.
Like you said, the tree lighting ceremony.
You know, I had just a comment, you guys have come so far, I'm just so proud of your department, Krista.
Thank you.
You really are, you guys have just been kicking it, it's just awesome.
Appreciate that.
Are the signs up, the splash pad?
What is, believe me, are the signs up?
The silhouette is.
Oh, that, remember, we had the silhouettes are up, but we wanted to wait till it was warm enough that we could get the decals on. They will be there before. We just.
Before it opens.
And then Chad can talk to how difficult that was to put those up, but he got, he got them up.
We need to let those specific businesses who donate quickly know that they're.
We will, we will send out something, well, we're gonna take pictures and send it to them, once we get it up there. We just wanna make sure that, cause it's, um, I can't even think of what it's called, what we're putting up, the decals.
Vinyl.
Vinyl, that's the word. We don't wanna put it up and then have, and not work. And so we want it to be good weather to put them up. I promise they'll be up.
I know, I just have to be there.
Every time you see me, you have to give me a turn. All right, that's, we're done.
You nailed Parks and Rec.
Thank you.
Good job. I gave you eleven minutes of stoppage time, so, thank you.
Although I still wanna, I think we oughta do those, like that sign I sent you. Uh, a lot, when I first got put in the council, I was at a, at an event, and there were a lot of misspelled words on that sign too, it makes me better. But it was, it was a sign that basically said, you know, our, our reps are not professionals, our, these kid, these kids are not.
Oh, yeah.
And, and.
Getting recruited by the majors today.
Yes, and we recruit by the majors today, so please be considerate. I, I do think that, I, I loved that sign and it was, it had some humor to it, but at the same time, it made the message that this is why we're doing this. I, I would like to see that on some of our diamonds if we can figure it out.
I will also say that you guys have been so awesome to bring ideas to, that, I mean, we're not loaded up with a bunch of suggestions right now. It's because you've been so receptive and we can bring that to you, you know, as they come and as they happen. And thank you also for that, you set the example, you set the standard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Krista. Seth, are you still with us?
Yep.
I put him to sleep, I put him to sleep.
It's eleven thirty.
We're gonna, we're gonna let you go to bed, it's eleven thirty. We're going to, I'm taking, going to take a motion here and go into one closed session. That can't happen electronically, so we're gonna say goodnight to you and let you, let you run. Thank you for joining us.
Goodnight, Seth. Stay trouble strong.
Thank you.
Don't the bed bugs bite.